Cindy Brad.
Here.
Julia it's Markie Cooper. Mr. Harley.
Here.
Mr. Kerr.
President.
Mrs. Lieber.
Present.
Dr. Rig.
Here.
Dr. Schaefer.
Here.
Mr. Schroed.
Here. Okay, good evening, everyone, and I want to thank you all for coming tonight, in person or virtually, as the case may be. I do not have a board president's message. Is there any public comment scheduled for tonight?
No.
No public comment for tonight. All right. All right, I A E asked me, anybody from those organizations here tonight? Nothing? I believe our SGA representative is here.
Yes.
You have a report for us tonight?
Yeah, I just have the city government is making a generous donation to the IHS Minithon, which supports childhood cancer, and we're also currently in our planning for prom, which with current regulations looks like it's going to be a pretty smooth sailing ride this year.
Very good, very good. Glad to hear you're back to normal on some of that stuff.
Thank you.
Anybody here from Stuco? Superintendent's report. Mike, it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a lot of items to go over. I'll go as quick as I can. Number one, with regards to Minithon, you've all received a personal invite from the students who are leading that event. I believe it's on March 24th?
I believe so. It's next Friday?
I think so. Next Thursday, I thought it was. Next Thursday, March 24th, the board received the invite to that. The administration will be going there to come see what the great work of the kids are doing. It's nice to return to normalcy and see them in action, so we're excited about that. Just a couple other updates. One relating to the projects. East Pike, we're ahead of schedule with the design. That submission's going to be sent on April 7th. We have some estimates coming in for those areas to get the work done, so we're proud of that. Meetings last Wednesday and today discussed include the room layout, casework, particularly in replacement unit ventilators, ductwork, bulkheads, and sidewall diffusers. And we'll have some additional conversations next week at Buildings and Grounds regarding that. There are some questions that came out of that committee that we'll fine tune on Monday. With regard to Eisenhower assessment, we are waiting confirmation from ICC reviewer feedback to finalize that report. And as well on Eisenhower Design, we have a kickoff meeting this Friday at 10:00 a.m. in East Pike Conference Room, and we're beginning zoning and code research and soliciting survey and geotechnical information. With regards to some outreach, I emailed our families my superintendent's report. APTT nights are scheduled, and what we did was we included a special invite from the students. APTT stands for Academic Parent Teacher Teams, and they're doing a lot of work to try to connect with our families, with our students. In elementary, they seem to be attended well. In the future, we're trying to fix that, so we get more attendance at the secondary level. And I think that's because we have kids and families who are in multiple schools, and it makes it tougher for them. So we're working on that calendar. Additionally, for the third time in a row, we have a donor, a donator, who's going to donate 200 free student tickets to Tuesday's basketball game at IUP, where IUP advanced into playoffs. So we've been working with Ms. Datsin. She's been at every game helping pass out the tickets. The team seems to be really formidable. And again, it's just nice to be working with IUP and have this partnership and make this available to our students. So I put that on our social media as well as my newsletter. Additionally, in here, I also included an update about Eisenhower building update. Let families know that, look, we are working on getting this building up and get it up and running. However, there are some concerns with supply chain issues and COVID issues. It's made it difficult, and we're hoping to get it open and be ready to go by May of 2024. But we just want to be upfront with families where they are next year, what's the progress we're going to make. And, Mr. President, we think it's prudent that each month we try to continue to update our families and our community about the progress being made at Ike. Additionally, in my newsletter is updated the school calendar, which you approved last meeting. We were making some changes tonight to fall in line with some things that we had to correct. But again, the calendar's up and available for families to see. And that's just in my article, sir.
Okay, anything else?
I do. I have one more thing. I'd like to give the floor to Dr. Schaefer. Dr. Schaefer and I worked on giving some social media shout-outs to some cheerleading competitions, and I will not do them any justice whatsoever, because they're so, the acronym's education I get, but there's a different one for cheerleading. I just told Dr. Schaefer I'll defer to him, so we don't miss, I don't misspeak.
Well, that's fine. I would just like to recommend, recognize some of the local young ladies in our area that are involved in this TIA, TAI Ice Queen Dance Troop. They went down, they had a chance to win the Triple Crown, which is an extremely difficult thing to win. They won when they went to Atlanta International Competition. They won in Dallas. They went to Orlando this last weekend, and they ended up finishing second. They were so close. Ten, ten teams in the entire world. This isn't just in internationally, like it's, it's all over. They got second. But the five young ladies that are in our district that are, were participants, I'd just like to read their names and recognize them. Bailey Oaks, Carly Stanley, Claire Stanley, Lillian Sedan, and Elena Walker.
Three cheers. What's that? No, I'm not going to go hip hip hooray.
That's where I thought you were going, sir.
I would love to see their routine as well, man.
They had quite a turnout on Thursday night.
Did they? Good. I'm glad we were able to help them out.
Very good, very good.
Real quick, one last shout-out. Girls' basketball had a great season, too. I'd like to recognize them. They were a fun team to watch, and they did it, they did a great job.
It does appear from listening to the radio station that the young ladies in the county seem to be doing much better this year. And so I would certainly challenge the gentlemen to up their game a little bit for next year. Anyway, is Ron on the call here tonight?
He's not, sir.
Okay, we don't have a solicitor's report. Presentations, none? Okay, we're down to approval of the minutes and the agenda. We have a motion for the minutes and the agenda. Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, board reports. We've not had a board meeting since, or a meeting at the ICTC. However, Dr. Rig has been working, Sue's been working on a project with the ICTC, and maybe you could give us a quick, quick update on that, Sue.
Sure. You also have the proposal for the possible partnership, Grow Your Own Teacher Academy at ICTC. So I met with Mr. McDermott today and the principal, I forget his name, Greg.
Mike.
Mike.
Okay.
We have a lot of Mikes around here.
Mike and Mike, all right. I met with Mike and Mike today, and they are going to be talking with the superintendents tomorrow. I talked with the superintendents last Wednesday at the SAC meeting, and the four superintendents from Indiana County that were there were all on board. They all signed that they would like to participate with us. So we're, we're making progress. The, where I'm hitting my head against the wall is I'm trying to write a PA SMART grant that is due Monday, a week from, as in a week from today. So trying to get all the information I need to write the SMART grant to involve all the schools is a little bit of a challenge, but I haven't given up yet, so.
Sue, for the benefit of the press and the public, in ten words or less, can you tell us what that, that academy is all about?
Sure. Grow Your Own Teaching Academy is where we would send students who want to be teachers, possibly their senior year. We're working out the logistics of when they would go to ICTC, but probably their senior year, they would go, we would form an Educators Rising Club, which I did talk with Mike Dermott today, and he said they could definitely add that to their list of clubs. So they would be members of Educators Rising. And then what we're hoping is to also partner with possibly Westmoreland County Community College. I'm meeting with them on Wednesday as well. And it would be a way for students to matriculate from the local high schools to possibly WCCC for an associate's degree, and then hopefully IUP or another four-year institution to get their teaching certification. And then we're hoping they'll want to stay in Indiana County and fill some of the needs that we have in teaching.
So this is not just a standard, ordinary shadowing program, it sounds like.
Yeah, no.
No.
You can interview her afterwards.
I apologize.
I'll talk to you later.
But the bottom line is, this is, there's a severe need for teachers at this point, and, and this is our way of trying to grow our own. So, thank you, Sue. Aaron.
There has been no meeting since our last board meeting, but there is one scheduled tomorrow, and I look forward to performing it.
Okay, you're up again, Tammy, for outreach.
The Outreach Committee is recommending that the board authorize us to purchase signed stickers and the pailpens at the cost of $1,144 that will show Indiana District our phone numbers and try, and build some local school pride.
Okay, very good. All right, and then we have an appointment to the Indiana Free Library Board. Is that?
No, that's, 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 that's your job.
Oh.
Yeah.
Generally, we don't have motions under board reports. My apologies.
No, it's not, it's not a motion. You simply appoint them. That's your, that's the only prerogative you have as president.
No, but it.
Four point three.
Four point three, though.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you were moving ahead.
Well, I was trying to. Somebody grabbed me by the shorts and pulled me back. So I guess that is a motion that you want on here for?
I would. Mr. President, the reason why is we did talk about outreach, outreach, these things were discussed publicly. We just didn't have it budgeted for, so we just want to make sure we have permission to go through.
Then the Outreach Committee Chair needs to make the motion.
I move that we go with the Outreach Committee recommendation for the pailpens, signs, and stickers at the cost of $1,144.
We have a second. Good. Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on this?
Mr. President, we're working with the Chamber of Commerce. We have an email and a Google form ready to go, depending on the board's motion to see. Try to solicit volunteers from different companies who may want to put these signs in their windows, and then we'll take care of the rest from there. But we're on top of it.
Okay. All those, any further questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, so we've got a Indiana Free Library. Mr. Neil Beer is president of the board. You're going to address this board.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. My name is Neil Beer. I'm currently the president of the Indiana Free Library, and I'd like to first off thank the board for their continued support of the library, and also to appoint a member. Our bylaws state that we already have appointed members from each of our service areas. That would be White Township, Indiana Borough, and Indiana School District, which also includes Shalock, the Borough, and Armstrong Township. I see a lot of people here I know, and Tammy, quite a while, a number of years, many of them, well, a number of years, too, many of the others, too. I would encourage all of you, if you haven't been to the library in some time, I was just talking with, with Mrs. Cooper there on the way, and she said, oh, I love the library. If you haven't been there for a while, please stop in. We've made a lot of changes. We're finally open. We're open normal hours. We had a little hiccup there with COVID, and we, year before that, we were, we were remodeling. So, but we knew how to have the new self-checkouts. You can scan your own books out. You can get permanent library, you can get the library cards, the plastic library cards. We were, you know, all online. You can get eBooks and anything else. And so I encourage you all strongly to visit the library. I thank, like, again, I thank this board for its support, and Tammy, I look forward to working with you and having that appointing member to our board. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Thanks, Neil. Okay, so may I have a motion then to appoint Tammy Blank to the Indiana Free Library Board?
Based on the, that the board appoints Tam, excuse me, that the board appoints Tammy Blank to the Indiana Free Library Board as representative from the Indiana Area School District for a term of three years.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion?
I have something I would like to volunteer for. We don't have anybody listed as an alternate, and if Tammy can't go, I would like to volunteer to be the alternate, because you do have alternatives.
Will you accept a friendly amendment?
Yes, and I'll be, I'll, 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 I'll.
Okay. Other questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations. Okay, on to academic and extracurricular. Tom, you're up.
Okay, we had a meeting on February 7th. It went for three and a half hours, so I'll be brief. Julie, we talked about the school calendar. The administration has some minor shuffling on the school calendar. Mike, you want to say anything about that?
Yes, sir. We had some snow days and other days we had to put inside. For example, April 19th this year will be a day in session. April 14th will be a day in session for students. April 19th is an act day-to-day. So any act day-to-days, we have to get board approved. So that motion that we discussed encompasses this year's schedule as well as next year's schedule as well, calendar.
Okay. But again, relatively minor. You didn't move the.
Absolutely.
You didn't move the start date two weeks.
We had one contractual issue that I failed to adhere to, so the association and I worked it out, and we had to make some changes.
So there's a motion coming up to, to solidify this. We heard a little bit from the Outreach Committee, a grant from the RMU Grant for Career Readiness. We discussed that and issued a letter of support. Is that a motion, or is that?
We do have grant, we do, we have two grant approvals we're seeking for. One from PCCD with regards to mental health and trauma, and then one, Dr. Rig forwarded to us from PD about developing future special education. So we'll work on that, teachers as well.
We had a presentation from my IP speech and the Indiana Partnership, which phenomenal what, 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 what we've been able to accomplish between those two, those, those, between our two organizations. So I believe there's a motion on that coming up. Rob snuck in a spring math intervention pilot that we're trying, we have an opportunity to do a little intervention with, with spring math as a math program, so that we can run it and test it and see if it lives up to its billing. We skipped over a bunch of things because we had a presentation on the BattleBots program at the Junior High, which is a phenomenal program. Twenty-four, six, seventh, and eighth graders are building robots, and the two teachers have built a, built a fighting cage. It's a little, it's, it's not quite the Olympic-sized machines that you see on TV. These are more like.
Shoebox?
She, no, bigger than shoebox, but smaller than a bread box. The arena's giant, yeah. But the machines are about this big. And, but it was really, it was really interesting. It's, kids are learning teamwork. They're designing these things. They're drawing these things. They're producing the parts in three dimensions in plastic. They're working with the ICTC and producing the actual parts, and then they actually have to assemble the parts and make the machine, and then they have to operate the machine in a competitive situation. It looks like a phenomenal program. I encouraged them to do more than 24 kids, and they said that Mike Rich wouldn't let them. So we'll see about that. But it was, it was a really nice presentation. And the kids that came to do the presentation were really, I mean, little sixth graders stood up there and talked to 45 people, which happened at the high school, which, if you do your committee meetings at the high school, okay, there's coffee.
No pizza, but coffee.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, and, and, and that's offered by Mrs. Datsin's kids, and it was just, it was really, it was really nice to see that thing working and how nice that Upper Commons has become. Most of us remember it when it was kind of a desert. We walked through, it was kind of vacant space, but it's really occupied now, and that, and that, and those kids in the, in the coffee line really, really make it up. Mike, what am I forgetting?
You have the YMCA reading camp. We have also the math after-school program that we're looking to seek approval here tonight as well. As you know, as we discussed, those funds are all through Esser, Essers, and those are set aside funds specifically for those purposes. So we have worked with our association to, within a couple days, develop a program to get it up and running that hopefully we'd like to start any, on or about March 21st.
Is there anything else?
There's some other. We talked about the staffing. I think those are the big ones. We can hit the last.
You went through the last five things in about, in about a minute each. Now, we had some really great presentations and discussions on the, on the IUP partnership and, and where that was headed. So we took most of our time flowing with the BattleBots. So I'd really like to see one of those gutsuckers run. And, and the kids, the kids hadn't actually assembled the machines yet. They were, they started the plastic parts, and they're just beginning the metal stuff. And so, so they were, they were nervous about whether it was actually going to work or not. So, it was neat. Can I move on to the motions then?
Sure.
Let me do, Sue, now, based on the recommendation of the administration, the board approves the student disfund agreements for students to, to 021-05, 2021-06, and 2021-07 as presented.
Okay, moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Based on the recommendation of the committee, the board authorized a superintendent to submit to the Department of Education request under Act 80 for the approval of the district to utilize February 18, 22, April 19, 22, June 3, 22, half-day, June 2, 23, half-day, as Act 80 Day to develop curriculum and to cancel June 2, 22, half-days previously approved by the Act 80 Day.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? Mike, do you have anything you need to add?
Nope. Those are the changes we discussed at last week's academic committee meeting. We're just following through and updating, making changes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Do you want to take some of these as a consent?
Five, four, five, five, and five, six as consent in the objection.
Okay.
I move, make those motions then.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? Mike, is there anything you need to add?
No.
Just beforehand?
No, sir. They're all discussed at the academic committee meeting. We feel comfortable moving forward.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motions carry.
Five, seven, and, five, seven, and five, eight, can we take those as a consent?
Yes.
Am I make those motions?
Second.
Okay, moved in second.
And, Mr. President, the only thing I'd like to do is request a friendly amendment for the board to consider friendly amendment to remove the physical education teacher. If I understood correctly, we want to have continued conversations about that, and we never got to the four pair educators. So with respect, would that be okay with you, Mr. Harley?
Um, I'd like to leave them in so that you have permission to post.
Okay.
We're not hiring, but I'd like to get that process started, the Pennsylvania Board.
Okay.
We can certainly discuss, and these, these are what we think we might need.
Yes, sir.
But these certainly aren't finalized.
Okay, yes, sir.
I'd, I'd like to get that process started. That's all right with the board.
Okay.
Any objections?
No, I thought we have the pair educators included anyhow. I thought the only one we were going to discuss was the athletic director.
Okay, but yes, that works. And what we could do, Mr. Harley, is later this week, we can work on summarizing how those positions are used and get that up to the board as well. We can do that.
Okay.
This would be the five, seven positions.
Yep.
So additional comments or discussion, questions on these two items? Nothing heard. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motions carry. Next group.
Five, nine, based on the recommendation, Academic Extracurricular Committee as well as policy personnel, the board authorized administration to post advertise an interview for Assistant Athletic Director for 2223 school year.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Five, 11, based on recommendation of the Academic Extracurricular Policy and Personnel, the board authorized administration to create post-advertise interview for game manager stipend for the remainder of the 2123 school year at a cost of $2,500.
Okay, it's moved in second for, on five, 11. Questions, comments, or discussion? Is there anything you want to add to that, Mike?
Yes, sir. What we did was this year, we went without the Assistant Athletic Director, and that has resulted in some hurdles in coverage and time. So what we thought we'd do for, maybe this year, to bring that back, to get us proper coverage for the rest of the year, sir.
So that's what the game managers.
Yes, sir.
Going to fill in for the.
Yes, sir.
Loss of the Assistant Athletic Director.
Yes, sir. And then next year, you know.
Try to post for an assistant.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Does this include any kind of a set schedule or any kind of conditions for rainouts of, you know, two weeks worth of games?
It would handle all that. It would handle scheduling of events, the coordinating of events, the rearranging of events, attending actual events, dealing with the safety event. So it encompasses all that. What we found was, where I made a mistake, Miss Cindy, was I thought one person can handle that, and Greg being the guy, I thought he could handle that. But we met with them, and they came to said, look, a little bit more help would be flexible for us. So that's why I brought it forward last week, and I'm bringing it forward again tonight.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to point out that the spring is when we have most of the rescheduling going on.
It's with track, and they're long days, and you're.
I mean, it's just the. It's outside, outside. The sports are outside, and, and we're, we, we play a month too early.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions, comments, or discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next motions.
Can I take five, 12, 13, and 14 together? You have to stay pretty much everything. Okay, this is the clause, okay. Based on the recommendation of the Academic Extracurricular Committee as well as the policy personnel, the board approves the agreement with IUP for literacy graduate students for the 2223 school year as submitted, and authorized administration to hire up to four graduate assistants not to exceed $110,000.
Okay, moved in second. Okay, the only thing I'll say is that one of the positions this board has taken, and previous boards have taken the same position, that we want all of our kids reading by the end of third grade on grade level, and this is one of the key things to support that, those efforts. So I'd certainly encourage the board to, to vote in favor of this. Questions, comments, or other discussion?
Yes, I would encourage the administration that if you find more graduate assistants that you just love, to come back to the board with their cost.
Yes, sir.
Any others? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have one abstention.
I have to abstain due to my position at IUP as the interim dean of the College of Education.
We certainly respect that.
You can bring that up.
I had to say why. I abstained. You have to say why. I want my colleagues back there from the professional studies department to take up against this.
Okay, Tom, the, the rest of them?
Five, 13, and five, 14, can I take those together?
Yes.
I make those motions?
So, or second.
Moved in second, 13 and 14. Mike, is there anything you'd like to, to add on those?
No, sir. We had a pretty good conversation last week that covered everything. This is a step in the right direction towards making sure that we are doing all we can to meet the needs of our students. I will speak to five, 14. Five, 14 is totally optional. It's no charge to the district, but it's not required by the district. It's a service that we are making available to the families, and that's something families have a choice in. But after some great discussion, we thought both of them were a step in the right direction.
Okay, I see Terry raised his hand. Terry, if you would, please.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to support both of them, but one question I had on five, 14. Did that provider give any school districts that we could contact and, and see how it's working in their district, or?
Yeah, they, I know Wade and, and Dr. and Nurse Pecora were going to talk about that. I did not follow up on that. I can try to get you something. There's nothing that's brought to my attention. I don't know if Wade, not to put you on a moment, was that something that you ever follow up on?
Yeah, I do not have any information at this time, but certainly did that.
Okay.
Okay. Further questions, comments, or discussion by the board? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion's carry.
Fifteen, five, 15, the board approves the following extra, the extra pay assignments for 2022, 2023 school year. Head football coach, $11,292 Bradley Wright. Head volleyball coach at $6,128 Allison Ball.
Second.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Both are not employees, is that correct?
Both are not what? I'm sorry.
Employees.
Employees.
Correct.
Questions, comments, or discussion? All those, well, yes, we wish them both lots of luck and lots of hard work.
Lots of success.
Yes, and lots of success. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Cindy, it's your turn.
We have a committee, committee meeting for the Policy and Personnel Committee tonight before this, and we basically went over and discussed everything that's already been approved. The things that we did not discuss and did not approve are going to be moved until later. So Tom, Tom approved everything from the committee meeting.
I didn't mean to.
It's just, you know. We've done it twice now, and now we're, we're at that meeting. So, motion 6.2, resignation of support staff, that the board accepts with regret the resignation of Gary Shearer, custodian, effective March 4, 2022, and authorizes the administration to post advertise an interview for this position.
Moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation. Terry?
Well, this is going to be awful short, because Mr. Vukovich did such an excellent job with his report, that he covered all the updates, including the meeting that was held this morning. So just the only thing I'll mention is to remind everybody that the next Building, Grounds, and Transportation meeting is next Monday night, March 21st. that the next Building, Grounds, and Transportation meeting is next Monday night, March 21st, start at 5:30 PM. And on the agenda is further discussion of the use of horse man. And I think for next week, we're going to brainstorm what potential community use is there. That's it, Walter, thank you.
Okay. Terry, thank you. Julia, it's your turn.
We have two motions tonight. We did not have a meeting tonight for the Audit and Finance Committee, but I think we'd meet on the 28th, is that correct? And just Jared, if you could, we're going to take these separately because we had a little bit of a change. On 8.2, I move that we approve the current, the current bills we approved as submitted.
Second.
I think we might have noticed that the bills were shorter this month and not as expensive. I was wondering what the reason for that is. If you could tell us what happened.
Well, last meeting, February 28th, was our only meeting in February. So we did a board's run approval February 28th. So the board report tonight for checks is really only two weeks' worth of checks. So that's why it's a little bit shorter, so.
Okay.
But you'll also notice that it's in a slightly new format, as well as the board condensed board summary. Starting last Monday, the business office upgraded, not to new software, but a new version of the software. So that's why you kind of see the new format of those two reports in there, so.
That's good. Congratulations. Is there any way to tweak that and fix the report so that it doesn't say, it's not repetitive? Everything's printed like twice. For every check, it says the account paid and the amount paid, and it lists the amount paid twice. I love the end of the report where it gives you a total of how much came out of the general fund and how much came out of each thing. But the report itself is using like twice the amount of ink because it's printing the same, instead of having column headings, it's got it for every single one.
Yeah, we can certainly, believe me, we can certainly take a look at that. We're still kind of getting used to the, the new software ourselves. So, yep, we can take that into consideration as, or even kind of see the change a little bit over the next couple of months as we try and find that perfect one.
I just can't imagine how long it'd be if you have this many bills. Because you have, because it's going to be pages and pages and pages.
And I don't like to waste paper, so we can, we can tweak that for sure.
I like the new reports.
Okay, so further questions or comments, discussion on the current bills? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next motion, Jewel.
Okay, this, these, these two, this motion gives me great pleasure to move that the board accepts the $5,000 donation from Mark Arbuckle to the Indiana High School Science Club to be used for their travel competition and supplies for the upcoming statewide science competitions. And also that the board accepts the $3,000 donation from Delaney Subaru to East Pike Elementary School for teachers to adopt a classroom program.
Second.
Moved in second on these donations.
Yes, we're just very grateful for, again, our community giving back. These are going to help, most importantly, the students in the science club. And we're appreciative of Delaney Subaru.